Hello everyone, I'm Travis Mayfield, President of Sycamore Media, the owner of the Dewitt Observer. Thank you for being with us tonight as we host this candidate forum for two open seats on the Central Dewitt Community School Board. Candidate forums like this one fit perfectly into Sycamore Media's mission of providing honest, objective reporting for the markets we serve. Tonight, you will hear from three candidates. Their incumbent Jed Ganzer, and newcomers Michelle Martins and Nick Strowman. Tonight's forum will be moderated by Sycamore Media's Wendy McCart. We hope you enjoy this event, and we hope you find it informative.
Hello and welcome to the 2025 Central Dewitt School Board Candidate Forum, hosted by the Dewitt Observer. I'm Wendy McCart, General Manager of the Observer, and I am honored to be serving as tonight's moderator. Serving as our official timekeeper this evening is News Editor Kelly Gerlach. On behalf of the Observer, I would like to thank our candidates for participating in tonight's forum. I'd like to thank the Central Dewitt School District for providing us this wonderful venue. And I'd like to thank Josh Grubel for his assistance in setting up and making sure that our microphones all work. Tonight's event is being recorded and will be made available online at dewittobserver.com. Coverage will also be available in next week's October 29th issue of the Observer. Tonight, we will hear from three candidates who have filed to fill two upcoming school board openings. Both terms will begin after the November 4th election. Candidates tonight are incumbent Jed Ganzer, and newcomer Michelle Martins and Nicholas Strowman. All topics and questions are based on input that Dewitt Observer received from the community, and formulated by members of our editorial board. With limited time for tonight's forum, we will not be taking questions from the audience. However, the candidates do have the option to make themselves available in the atrium following the event for any additional questions you may have. Candidates will each be given two minutes to introduce themselves and share an opening statement. Following their opening statements, I will ask the same seven questions to each candidate. Tonight's seating arrangement was determined by the candidates each drawing a random number. And with each question, I will rotate the order of who will answer first, so each candidate has the opportunity to answer first and answer last. Candidates will be given 90 seconds to answer each question. Kelly, our official timekeeper, will hold up a 30-second card and a 15-second card, so candidates are aware of their remaining time. At the end of their 90 seconds, the alarm will sound signaling that their time has ended. Timer. Please put two minutes on your clock. And Candidate One, please introduce yourself and share your opening statement.
Hello, I am Jed Ganzer and am a proud resident of Dewitt for 26 years. I want to thank everyone for attending today, especially other candidates Nick and Michelle, because it does take some courage to put oneself out there for all to scrutinize. I'm here today because I want to continue serving the wonderful Central Dewitt Community School District. I truly believe in its mission to serve all students in an innovative and supportive learning environment, preparing them for lifelong success. I will continue to be a lifelong learner and attend training to continue to be a better advocate for all. A few trainings that I have gained knowledge from include: school finances and special education funding, mental health, and crisis response. If re-elected, I will attend the Iowa Association School Boards Conference in Des Moines later this November. After having raised my children in this district, and retiring from a teaching career at Davenport West High School, and continuing a small handyman business, I knew that I wanted to get back to our community. Becoming a school board member is one way for me to do that. I want to continue to work with our other four school board members, whoever they may be, our Superintendent Dr. Michler, and our Chief Financial Officer Sarah Johnson. We will continue riding the financial ship to an 8% to 10% unspent authorized budget, better known as the UAB. It is a key indicator of a school district's financial health. When the district obtains that 8% to 10% UAB, I will advocate to lower our property taxes back to where they were. I want to continue giving our students the opportunities with academic, athletic, music, and other activity choices. We will have, we have a supportive administration, great teachers, and an awesome staff here that makes us a fine school district that we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you Jed. Thank you Jed. Nicholas, please go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nick Strowman, and I'd like to thank all of you for attending the event and having a vested interest in our school system, which is, I believe, the lifeblood of our community. When deciding to move to Dewitt 20 years ago, one of the main draws of the community was the school district for me. My wife Brandy and I have four kids currently enrolled in the central school system. Price is senior, Lilly is sophomore, Braylon in seventh grade, and Trace in fifth. I work in the agriculture community, Sinclair Tractor. We are a John Deere dealership in southeast Iowa. We have 13 locations. And my role in the company is ag sales manager overseeing the budget, purchasing, deal structuring for all ag business. Throughout the last 25 years of my career, I've had the pleasure of working with many different customer segments, including government, local, ag business, and construction backgrounds, creating insight and a vast array of needs for financial methods to which those are attainable. I enjoyed being a member of the fire department in my younger years, and part of my involvement in that was budgeting at the county and city level. We did a fair amount of work with grant writing, fundraising during my tenure, allowing me to gain a lot of experience. My background brings insight to the budget, working with people from various businesses and financial environments, understanding how programs work on the government side, and firsthand experience as a parent of how the current system is working with kids involved. I'm running for the board to keep balance of taxes, budget, quality education in line. A school is the key to a successful community, and like anything else in your life, you must continually improve, or you'll be quickly far behind. I look forward to being part of that group that guides the Central Dewitt Schools to the next level. Thank you.
Thank you Nick. Kelly, go ahead with another two minutes. Candidate Three, Michelle Martins.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Martins, and I am honored to be here tonight as a candidate for our local school board. Thank you Wendy and the Observer for organizing this event, and thank you to the members of our community who have taken your time out of your busy lives to come and get to know a little bit more about Jed, Nick, and me. I was born and raised right here in Dewitt. I graduated from Central Dewitt High School, and both of my children are proud Central Dewitt graduates. I've spent my career as a special education teacher in Davenport for the last 25 years. I own a small business in our community, and I've stayed actively involved in local events and organizations. This community isn't just where I live, it's who I am. I'm running because I believe strong schools build strong communities, and to get there, we need leadership that is community-driven, student-centered, and future-focused. Community-driven means listening, really listening, to families, teachers, staff, and students. It means transparency in decision-making and making sure every voice has a seat at the table. I believe the best solutions come not from the top-down, but from the ground up, through partnership, trust, and respect. Student-centered means putting our kids at the heart of every decision. That includes safe and inclusive schools, relevant curriculum, mental health supports, and the resources our teachers need to help every student thrive, not just academically, but as whole people. And being future-focused means preparing students for the world they're stepping into, not the one we grew up in. That means embracing innovation, expanding career and technical education, strengthening life skills, and ensuring equity of opportunity for every student regardless of zip code, background, or ability. I'm not running to check the box. I'm running to roll up my sleeves, ask hard questions, and build bridges to work collaboratively to move our schools forward. Thank you.
Life can be complicated. Schedules, bills, big decisions, but your finances, they don't have to be. At Dewitt Bank &amp; Trust and Wilton Bank, we're your friends, your neighbors, people you know and trust. Banking doesn't need to be complicated, it just needs to feel right. Everything you need, all in one place, all under one roof. Put trust in the people you know. Dewitt Bank &amp; Trust and Wilton Bank. Advice, answers, action, always.
We will now move on to our question session. We'll start the first question with Jed. Jed, how have you, I'm sorry, Jed, how have you and how will you educate yourself to be a good school board member?
Like I said in my opener, I've already attended some trainings, and I would continue to do that and attend the Iowa Association School Boards Conference in November. Making sure I attend all school boards. Be open to listening to our community. We try to do that as a school board. I would work positively with the other school board members, like I have the last six months. I definitely don't say that I figured everything out yet. It's six months, I've learned some things, but definitely have much more to learn.
Thank you Jed. Nick, the question goes to you. How have you and how will you educate yourself to be a good school board member?
Well, there's a lot of great training out there on the state level that you can go and attend, but what I did to kind of pre-work on some of this stuff is really kind of dug into where some of the funding comes for the school, through tax rates and things like that. And so kind of got a good picture of that, listened to a lot of community members about what their feedback of positive and negative things that were going on at the school. And I think, you know, it just takes having a good set of ears, being able to listen to what people are saying, and take some of the good pieces out of it and help really guide that, so we'd do a lot of that.
Thank you Nick. Moving on to Michelle. Michelle, how have you and how will you educate yourself to be a good school board member?
I think in order to be a school board, a good school board member, you have to first be able to let yourself be vulnerable and be able to say, "I don't know everything, but I'm willing to ask the questions to learn." And so I think the first thing is just admitting, "I don't know everything." But what I have done up to this point is I've reached out to current school board members, asked questions. I've reached out to Dr. Michler and asked questions. I have done research on, you know, just looking through the school district and their policies. I've gone back and I've watched some recordings and videos of trainings that have been done by the School Board Association to find out exactly what does it mean to be a school board member, and what are your roles and responsibilities. Making sure that I know that I need to remember that I am one voice, but it is important for me to use my voice to ask hard questions sometimes, and know that sometimes we are going to have to make difficult decisions, and as long as we do those in a way that is data-driven, and solution-focused, and future-focused. And also just remembering that our key role is to remember that, you know, we're here to set and enforce policies, and to hire a superintendent when needed, and to, yeah, set policies, enforce policies, and to keep the balanced budget.
Thank you Michelle. Question number two goes to Nick to start us off. Nick, what are the most important goals for a school district?
I think one of the most important goals is really to have a sound financial budget. That's the foundation of any school district, is to be able to fund the programs and the education that you want to, support the teachers, have expansion of programs. So, the foundation and the most important piece in my mind is the school board being good stewards to the budget, not only from making sure it's balanced and taken care of, but also keeping the taxpayers in mind on being transparent with how that money's being spent, when they need to raise that, lower that, and what that money is actually going to. So I think that's a really important key that the school board can really set up a lot of things great for the school district in the future by making sure they're in tune with that.
Thank you Nick. Moving on to Michelle. Michelle, what are the most important goals for a school board?
I think the most important goal for the school board is to remember that we need to look to the future and make decisions based on what is going to be best for our students and our community, and like Nick said, keeping the budget in mind and making sure that we keep ourselves in a situation where we are able to move forward and be able to fund strong programs for our students so that we can, so that we can help them grow and build their futures. So I think it's really just finding that balance between our needs and our wants, and how do we fund those things so that we can continue striving for excellence.
Thank you Michelle. Jed, the question goes to you. What are the most important goals for a school board?
The most important is to be student-centered and student-focused. The job of a school is to educate all of our students. Second, we need to do that in a fiscally responsible way. Currently, we are trying to right that ship, and we are on the path to doing that. So we will continue working in that regard and continue to make that happen. Thirdly, board members have to work with the other board members. So there are five board members here in Dewitt, Central Dewitt Community School District, and so we need to work with those other board members closely and civilly and make sound decisions. The other person that we have to work with is the superintendent. Okay, we rely on the superintendent to captain the ship, and then we look over that. And so we have to work closely with the superintendent in those regards and make sure that our school is being run properly and abiding by all federal and state laws.
Thank you Jed. Question three goes to Michelle to start. Michelle, as a school board member, how would you balance taxation with the financial needs of the school district?
So I think the first thing we need to do is we need to, obviously, everybody, I mean, we've all had the conversations within the community of taxes and how we have to look at raising them, you know, recently in the last year. I think that comes with being responsible and looking at the future. We need to, we are in a situation right now where we are in a financial recovery situation, but I think that in order to balance where we are with our taxes, like Jed said before, we have our UAB, we need to keep that within an 8% to 10% range. What we can do then is we can look, and if we're able to stay in that range, then we say, "Okay, let's lower those taxes again," so that we don't get in a situation where we have to do such a heavy increase. Again, I talked about how we're in this recovery mode, but that doesn't mean that we can't still look to the future, and we have to still be responsible for planning for future needs. So I think it's taking where we're at with our budget, making sure we stay within our UAB, and then making decisions, sometimes really hard decisions, sometimes not favorable decisions, but doing that based on where we are to make sure that we don't get ourselves in a situation where we are running negative.
Thank you Michelle. The question goes to Jed. Jed, as a school board member, how would you balance taxation with the financial needs of the school district?
It's always a concern, and we've already dealt with that here in Central School District. We had to raise property taxes because we needed a set amount of cash reserve in order to pay and make payments that come through, such as insurance, wages, and those sorts of things. And so that had to have happened, and I will quote Dan Smicker, one of our other board members, and this was in the September 17th Observer. "Dr. Michler and Sarah Johnson are solving our financial problems. You are doing what we ask. The second our financial problems are solved, I'm going to push very hard for tax reductions. I'm voting affirmatively, not because I want to, but because I need to." And I agree with that statement, and that was in April that he made that statement. I had just got on the board. And he's right, and it's, and we needed to do that, and I agreed with that statement. Thanks.
Thank you Jed. Up next is Nick. Nick, as a school board member, how would you balance taxation with the financial needs of the district?
I think it's no surprise that the folks of the school district are a little bit challenged with having their property taxes raised, and then some, raising from school funding, and so that's a big issue to a lot of people out there, and so we've got to balance that with what the school really needs. The budget's an ongoing thing. There's more things just in the budget than having enough money to pay bills. It's can we get some savings on our size and our scale, and what are other districts doing with the same situations, and how have they navigated through it? So, to me, it's a really ongoing thing, and where it's a thing you work on daily, that you have to really make sure that you're being fiscally responsible. You can't be running at a shortfall, but you can't have a big surplus either because you're using taxpayers' money. So there's a fine line that we have to really walk, and we have to be transparent with the folks of why we're taxing, when we're going to end that tax, and what we're doing to spend that money.
When it comes to upgrading your home, choose America's largest exterior remodeler, Window World. High-quality, energy-efficient, and built to last, our windows deliver comfort, beauty, and savings. With over 3.5 million projects completed and tens of thousands of five-star reviews, homeowners across the country trust Window World to get the job done right. Professional installation, unbeatable value. That's the Window World way. Call now for your free quote.
We are back to Jed for the next question. Question number four. Why has teacher retention become so challenging for school districts across Iowa? And what can Central Dewitt do to make the district more appealing to top-level educators?
That is a problem not only for our district, but as you stated, statewide. I think Iowa, we're at a disadvantage because we don't have a lot, lot here to come to. Central Dewitt, I think we do have some advantages here. Not only our location, we're close to metropolitan area, the Quad Cities, and we're also close to Clinton, so that helps. But it's always still a struggle, and the things that we can do is offer a decent salary and benefit package, and treat people with respect. I think just treating them positively and respectfully goes a long ways. And I've heard from different teachers that it seems to be that is happening for the most part here. Not that there aren't disgruntles once in a while, I mean, it happens, right? Especially during this time where we're in this budget crunch. During this, during this time, teachers are not probably seeing a raise or benefit package that they would like to see, but our hands are tied.
Thank you Jed. Moving on to Nick. Nick, why has teacher retention become so challenging for school districts across Iowa? And what can Central Dewitt do to make the district more appealing to top-level educators?
Well, it's a, it's a super tough job, first off. They get a lot of grief and have a lot of work and do a lot, but, you know, people, they don't usually quit organizations, they don't quit companies. It's the people aspect that they're there for, and so it's the environment is the biggest thing, of having a great school system, a great support network with their, with the people they work with, knowing that they have continuing education, knowing they're being supported financially through the budget on programs. And, you know, pay and benefits is definitely right up there, but, you know, the differentiator in my opinion is the environment. If you like where you work, if you like the people that you work with, you're more apt to be in that environment. So that's what we've got to create as a whole to make sure that we have an encompassing place that they enjoy working at.
Thank you Nick. Question moves to Michelle. Michelle, why has teacher retention become so challenging for school districts across Iowa? And what can Central Dewitt do to make the district more appealing to top-level educators?
I think the one thing that makes retention really hard is teachers seem to sometimes lose their why. As an educator, I know why I went into education, and sometimes when the days get long, the days get hard, and you tend to lose sight of that why. And so in order to, I think, help teachers remember why they're there, it is more than just the money. We did not go into this for the money, but in order to remind them of the why, you have to take care of them. And to take care of your teachers, it means supporting them, listening to them, having a solid administrative team who makes the teachers feel valued and important. Our kids are bringing things to these schools every day that are, things that are beyond what we ever had to deal with in our lifetime, and things that, things that I hope that we can change for some of these kids. But in the meantime, just helping teachers remember that they are supported as well, and that they're not alone. So I think in order to, in order to keep teachers wanting to come back, yeah, you need to pay them well, you need to give them good benefits, but you need to keep them focused on their why, and in order to do that, you need to support them.
Moving on to the next question, and we'll start with Nick. Nick, the role of a school board member is to govern the district, not manage it day to day. That said, how would you ensure the work the administration is doing is consistent with the board's priorities?
Well, that's a, that's a very accurate statement. You know, you have to make sure that you trust your team to manage what they're supposed to manage, and you have to have utmost confidence in that team. And I think the big thing is, is, you know, being involved in what they need, and what their priorities are, and where their goals are at throughout the year and tracking that. You know, there's a, there's a pretty good opportunity to check in every month through the school board, or through networking and saying, "Hey, how's it going? What's going on? What do you need? What are the challenges you're facing?" So it's really setting the priorities and the tone, and making sure those benchmarks are hit throughout the year, and if they're not, what resources do you need to help get back on track to make that happen?
Thank you Nick. The question goes to Michelle. Michelle, the role of a school board, the role of a school board member is to govern the district, not to manage it day to day. That said, how would you ensure the work the administration is doing is consistent with the board's priorities?
So I think we need to look together as a board and make sure that we are, we are well-informed and we educate ourselves on what are the district policies and the standards. We need to know what the district's vision is, where does the district want to go, and then from there, we need to count on our administration, and it's again, trusting them, and working with our administrative team to bring us the reports of what is going on. And then as, as a collective group of board members, we can, we can then just double-check and make sure that, hey, this is, this is the reports they're bringing us. Is this matching, is this matching what our policies say, or is this matching what the vision is, or what the plan is? And just staying in communication with our administrative team and making sure that what they are doing aligns with, aligns with what the policies and the goals are that have been set by the district and by the teams.
Thank you Michelle. The question goes to Jed. Jed, the role of a school board member is to govern the district, not to manage it day to day. That said, how would you ensure the work the administration is doing is consistent with the board's priorities?
I believe Dr. Michler and our administration here do a good job of informing the board and giving us data to look at, and showing us whether they're meeting the goals that we have set forth for them. Just at the last board meeting, two of our principals informed- Uh, just at the last board meeting, uh, two of our principals, uh, informed of us of their data and, and the students', uh, assessment scores and where we were at. And so that's important, and that's important that we look at that and we ask questions and continue to do that. We continue to ask questions, continue to work with, uh, the superintendent, Dr. Michler, and our administration team, uh, the principals, and continue to make sure that they're, uh, working towards their goals, uh, hitting benchmarks. And if not, asking questions and seeing what, what they need or what can, what can we do or what, what can we do better to make sure that, that those goals and benchmarks are, are met.
Thank you, Jed. Question number six, we will start with Michelle. Michelle, what is your position on our state's decision to use taxpayer dollars to pay for private school vouchers? And what do you believe the impact has been and will be in the future?
As a public educator, this is a really hard question to ask me. Um, I do feel like it has, it has hurt our, our public schools. Um, you know, as, as a school district, we are given roughly around $8,000, I believe it is, per student. I think it's like 7988 or something like that per student. Um, and so when that money comes in and, um, but it's going to, uh, to a private school, um, that's, that's $7,800 or $7,988 that we are losing per student right here within our, our school district. Um, and when we look at what our budgets are, um, you know, we have, we have our general fund, we have our PEPPOS, we have all these things that, that our money has to pay, and I know there's all these different pots, and of course, I'm not, I don't know all of them. But, you know, just, just being able to pay our staff and paying for curriculum and transportation and all these things, $7,900 per kid that we lose, it adds up pretty quickly. And so, um, so I think it, it does add to, it adds another layer of, of struggle when it comes to, uh, funding our public schools.
Thank you, Michelle. The question goes to Jed. Jed, what is your position on our state's decision to use taxpayer dollars to pay for private school vouchers? And what do you believe the impact has been and will be in the future?
Another reason why I'm against it is the private schools are not held accountable like public schools are. Uh, matter of fact, they don't have to accept all students. Uh, we recently had a student who was at St. Joe's, and St. Joe was, for whatever reason, uh, that student was no longer welcome there. Well, we had no choice. We had to welcome that student, and we didn't. Um, financially, how is that impacting us? Not sure. Um, my guess is, is that it's going to negatively impact us. We do know that the state of Iowa right now is already dipping into their cash reserves. Is it because of the private school funding? I don't know. Could, our, our state senator, Mike Zimmer, would say definitely it is, but, uh, that was something that you as an individual would have to look into and, and make that choice.
Thank you, Jed. Moving on to Nick. Nick, what is your position on our state's decision to use taxpayer dollars to pay for private school vouchers? And what do you believe the impact has been and will be in the future?
Well, it's, uh, definitely changed the, the playing field on how things work. And so whether you're for or against it, there's opinions on both sides of it. Um, I really more would like to focus on what the reality of it is. And the reality of it is, in an open market, it creates competition. And we're basically in competition to make sure that we can provide the best school system that the school, that the kids want to choose to come to, the parents want their kids to come to. So the better job we can do promoting why we are worth, what we're worth as a school system as a whole with better teachers, better facilities, better programs, the less likely a parent is going to want to take that voucher or open enroll their kid to a different district. So we have to do a better job, in my opinion, as a whole, of promoting, um, what we have to offer to give them the reason to stay here or come here and kind of win that numbers game on, uh, you, you can't go negative or does impact the, the school. So you've got to be either net neutral or positive, and that's what one of the goals needs to be is to make sure we're tracking to stay on that, uh, path.
At Sycamore Media, this is who we are.
Sycamore Media's fundamental goal is to help communities understand themselves through fair, objective journalism.
We believe honest information is powerful.
And we believe it is a vital ingredient in good decision-making.
And effective self-government.
We will strongly advocate for government transparency.
And accountability, fair play, and an honest assessment of public issues.
We also will endeavor to ensure that all individuals and reasonable ideas are given fair hearing.
Beyond that, our work should help provide connected tissue for our communities.
Helping businesses succeed through marketing services.
And binding people together through shared experiences.
Accomplishments and celebrations.
We've made it to our very last question. Question seven, and we'll start back with Jed on this one. Jed, what is your approach to bring people together who have differing views and opinions to resolve challenges?
Well, I guess first and foremost, uh, be friendly, be civil, and have an, have an open ear. Listen to, to everyone, right? Listen to everyone who's, who's involved, uh, irregardless of whether you agree with their opinion. Um, and then you're, you know, I think if everybody listens and they do it in a civil manner, it, it helps and eases that tension. And, uh, there's nothing wrong with having differing opinions. Uh, sometimes that can be very helpful. Uh, sometimes you can bring those things together, and sometimes it forces teams to compromise.
Thank you. Up next is Nick. Nick, what is your approach to bring people together who have differing views and opinions to resolve challenges?
Well, I have the pleasure of working with farmers on a daily basis, so that's a, that they've got a lot of opinions and different challenges, so that's great. But, um, you know, there's an art and a science, um, to, to working with anybody that you have maybe different views and opinions, but that's what makes the school board so special is you don't have everybody on there with the same idea. Otherwise, you get a not, not the best product you could in the community. So, um, you, you gotta listen, you gotta be willing to compromise, and you gotta be willing to look at somebody's perspective and say, yeah, I can see that. I might not agree with it, but I could see it. What are we going to do to find common ground and move forward? Um, being at a stalemate, not moving anything forward isn't productive either. So you've got to work with everybody to find common ground and make that happen. And you know what? We've got a pretty good group of people in the community. I think that that's not a huge challenge of figuring that out. Everybody wants a good school district, everybody wants a good, strong community, and so I think, I think we all share that feeling up here, so thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Michelle, what is your approach to bring people together who have differing views and opinions to resolve challenges?
To be a listener, to be respectful, and to remember that at the heart of it all, this is about the students. We need to stay student-centered. Yes, we are going to have different opinions, especially like as a school board, we are five different people. One voice, like I am one voice, Nick is one voice, Jed is one voice. We need to find a way to, out of respect for each other and out of respect for our students and our community, we need to find a way to take all of our voices, listen to each other, and, and to find a way to, to find that common ground where we can, we can just maybe put aside our differences and do what's best for kids. There may be something along the way, you know, while you share a view with me, it may open my eyes to something I didn't realize before. It may open my eyes, I need to look at it as an opportunity for me to maybe learn and grow myself. Um, so I think the whole idea is just keeping the focus on where it needs to be, and that's what do we need to do to make the best school for our kids? Um, and just, just keep your mind open and remember that we're all in this for the same reason.
Thank you, Michelle, and thank you, candidates. That concludes our question session, and I, I truly do appreciate you being willing to be here this evening and answer the questions that you did, you had no prior knowledge about what we were going to ask, and that is not an easy position to be in. So, um, thank you for being willing to get up here and do that. Uh, moving on now, we will move on to our closing statements. We'll start with Jed again and go one, two, three, right down the line. Each candidate has two minutes for their closing statement. Kelly, let us know when you're ready. All set? Okay. Jed, whenever you're ready.
Hello, once again, I'm Jed Ganzer, and I would again like to thank everyone who attended. It shows you care about our students. I especially want to thank Michelle and Nick. I also like to thank Wendy McCart and The Observer for hosting this forum. And Mr. Grubel, I don't know if he's still up there for setting up our lighting and speakers. Hi, Mr. Grubel. Uh, so how do we achieve fiscal responsibility as a school district and yet continue to offer academic excellence in a supportive learning environment, remembering we are here for the students? As I have heard Dr. Michler in the past, let's look at it as an opportunity. I personally like to ask, is our cup half-full or half-empty? So let's be positive with opportunities and cups full to the rim. I also want to clarify one of my answers earlier with the private school, because St. Joe is a partnership school for us. I, I, and that's a complicated little thing, but anyway, I do, I do want to make, clarify that St. Joe is a partnership school. Uh, I will continue to advocate for fiscally responsible decisions while maintaining an innovative, supportive learning environment. Sometimes cuts might be inevitable, but I'm always cautious. Be careful what you ask for. I know from experience in the Downport District that if classes are full, teachers will not be cut, but unfortunately, support teachers will be. Luckily, the other night when I asked Mr. Millard, principal of Extran, if any reading specialists were let go, he had a positive response and none were cut. In conclusion, thank you for allowing me to serve as your current school board member. I would be honored to serve again. Can't get my reading glasses on, sorry here. Um, I would like to first and foremost thank the community for attending the event. I would also like to thank The Observer for hosting. Jed and Michelle, thank you for a very civil discussion on how to shape the next few years of our district. We have a great school system with a lot of superb staff that makes Central DeWitt outstanding. However, it would be foolish to stand up here and tell you that everything is awesome in our district. Every community wants great schools, good teachers, lower taxes, and to attain every educational program available. The reality is, there is a balance to everything. We must be sure we are prioritizing the needs of our students along with ensuring the stability of our budget to continue to meet those needs. Transparency is key. We must be able to share the excitement of progress along with the struggles as they come. If one complains about the school system choices or tax bills and you don't do anything about it, it's not progression and it's not affecting a positive change. I like to live the philosophy that you can't complain about an issue if you're not willing to do something to help bring positive change. You can count on me to be involved and to push to make sure the system is better. I don't have educational experience like the two others up here, however, I do believe teachers and superintendents do a terrific job of handling the needs of what needs to be done and prioritizing students in education. What I can bring to the table is a powerful background in finance to help correct and stabilize the budget and to make sure that funding is there for educational programs that both our teachers and students need and desire. We have a lot of outstanding qualities as a district that we don't need to change, but as soon as we put up the mission accomplished banner is when we fall behind and we lose the momentum that we need for our students and our community. Let's be sure to never declare mission over and continue to improve on our school system. Thank you.
Thank you all again for being here tonight and for caring about the future of our schools and our children. As a lifelong resident of DeWitt, a graduate of Central DeWitt, a parent of two Central DeWitt alumni, a teacher, small business owner, and active community member, I care deeply about this district because it's personal. This is home. I've spoken about my priorities, but at the heart of it, this is simple. I'm running for school board because I believe in, I believe every child, every single child deserves access to an excellent public education that prepares them not just for tests but for life. I'm also running for school board because I want every student to have the kind of experiences that not only prepares them for a successful future, but makes them want to come back. I want them to feel so proud of where they came from, so supported by their school and community, that they choose to raise their own families right here in the same town and school district that helped build them. We face big challenges, but we also have great opportunities. If we lead in a way that is community-driven, we can rebuild trust, strengthen partnerships, and ensure transparency. If we stay student-centered, we'll keep our focus where it belongs, on what's best for kids, not politics or personal agendas. If we remain future-focused, we can ensure our students are ready for the changing world ahead, whether that's college, career, or something entirely new. I'm not a politician, I'm a listener, a problem solver, and someone who deeply cares about the success of every student in our district. This election isn't about me, it's about us. It's about what kind of schools we want, what kind of community we're building, and what kind of future we're creating together. I'm ready to work hard, listen with humility, and lead with integrity. I respectfully ask for your support. Thank you.
For all of those attending this evening in person, we invite you all to stay and talk with the candidates one-on-one in the atrium following the conclusion of our forum. I'd like to once again thank our candidates for being willing to be here tonight and for being willing to share your time and talents to serve our community school district. Thank you to all of those who are attending and watching, and we appreciate also the community members who, uh, sent us suggestions for questions as well. And to all of you for participating in the democratic process. November 4th, you'll be able to cast your vote for two of the candidates, and we appreciate you doing so. Thank you and good night.